Merrimack TV, you ready? Okay. Good evening and Happy New Year. Welcome to the January 3rd, 2022 Merrimack School Board Meeting. Please join me in rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Next up is public participation. Just like usual, what I will do is ask you to come to the microphones, state your name and address for the record. Also, we will rotate between, we're still accepting online public participation. So we'll rotate back and forth. I think everyone I see has been to the meetings before here, so I think everyone knows the rules. And we will go ahead and just get started. Any public participation from the room this evening? No? Okay, Shannon, I know you have a couple, so we'll just go right through those and we'll move on to the business portion of our meeting.
So, public comment, we have two. Bear with me. My 40s were not kind to me, so. Barbara Sousa, 4 Griffin Street. For kids that test positive for COVID and are missing school, what are we doing to help them stay current with work at school? We don't have the option for remote, and when they get back to school, they've moved on. They have a week's worth of work to catch up on in addition to current work. My middle school kids can use Canvas for assignments that have posted, but they don't have the benefit of a teacher explaining the work to them. Not all assignments are on Canvas, though. Thanks so much. The next is from Lisa Mongovan, 14 Lamson Drive. Dear School Board, I am writing to you this morning to consider keeping Merrimack School District's quarantine to 10 days or to let families know what the quarantine rules now are. The CDC said that you no longer had to quarantine after five days of COVID infection if symptom-free, but must mask. If Merrimack is considering implementing the CDC guidelines, you must consider that these students must keep their masks on at all times, even if opted out. This includes separating these students for lunch, or maybe even testing before returning to school to ensure they are negative for infection. I know some districts are still staying with a 10-day quarantine period. Whatever the decision, please make it known to families what the policies are for the Merrimack School District. Lisa Mongovan. Those are all the emails we have so far this evening.
Thank you, Shannon. We will move on to recognitions. Any recognitions?
No, no recognitions tonight.
Okay.
Nothing for this evening.
Item number four, informational updates. The superintendent update.
Yes, thank you. The vaccination clinic has been moved about a week later now. That is the clinic that our HR director, Melissa Fazek, was able to coordinate with Rite Aid. That is now going to be January 13th from 4:00 to 7:00 PM at Merrimack High School Cafeteria. So it's about a week later than originally scheduled. Received a letter from the New England Association of Schools and Colleges that the accreditation visitation will take place from Sunday, May 15th through Wednesday, May 18th of 2022. And I know the high school staff has devoted a tremendous amount of work in preparation for this periodic review, accreditation review, which is very important. Want to remind everyone we have an early release day coming up, not this Friday, but the following Friday on January 14th. That is for some required training for our staff in accordance with state law and our own policy. And so, once again, that will be January 14th. We will be sending out the specific early release times for each level sometime this week. And I want to thank the staff and students at the upper elementary school. They have sponsored Kindness Month with a variety of in-class activities. Several classrooms have been recognized for going above and beyond in their random acts of kindness. Very important in terms of our social, emotional wellness. Grade 5 and 6 band students were invited to perform in a December recital. They did an excellent job. The Promising Futures Grant that was obtained from the upper elementary school is being used to hire a mindfulness consultant. And that mindfulness consultant is collaborating with our staff to design and implement wellness strategies for the classroom, which is very important. And JMU's art teacher, Tracy Gruber, with the help of Mock Tires, has recently offered an after-school art club to students. And there are presently 30 students attending every Tuesday between 3:30 and 4:30. So we congratulate them on offering that after-school program. It's very important at all ages that we keep students engaged as much as possible, not only during the academic day, but beyond. We also want to wish everyone a very happy, healthy new year. We hope it'll be a good one for everyone, students, staff, and our families throughout the town. And that is all I have for this evening.
All right, thank you. The Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Update.
Thank you very much. Happy New Year to everyone. I just have one announcement, and that is that our digital learning specialists, K through 6, have been meeting and met as early as today to set up some standardization for the Canvas pages in terms of students accessing instruction on Canvas and teachers posting lessons on their Canvas pages. We have a kind of a mark in the sand for May, for all of this to be uniform across all six schools. But they're making great progress and are really committed to that. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent for Business.
I am all set, thank you.
School Board update and student representative update.
Hi, I just have a quick rundown about midterms coming up for all the parents. So, midterms is coming up, and what the schedule looks like this year is there's an odd block review day on Friday, the 21st. Then the odd block midterms are on January 24th and 25th. The 26th is an even block review day, and then the even block midterms are on the 27th and 28th. And this is just an announcement, especially for the parents. Any block that a child has lunch or a study is an excused absence without parent dismissal needed. So, that's my update.
Thank you. Number five, old business, the Health and Safety Task Force update.
Just a very brief update. Excuse me, just a very brief update this evening. I did send out some information to you earlier in the day today in terms of the percent of positive cases of total occupants in the building. This data was as of the 22nd of December. At that point in time, we were still well within the 5% benchmark that we passed several weeks ago that would require full masking for a period of time. I will say that I've, we don't have all of the data from today. That is still being entered, and as of either tomorrow or Wednesday, I will send out an update to this information to you because our numbers, like everywhere else, are increasing. As you can see on this sheet, as of December 22nd, the high school had six positive cases in the student population. Today alone, it was reported 41 cases. So that is about 3% of the total number of occupants at the high school. So those numbers are climbing. I'll keep you informed, I'll keep the public informed, along with our staff, of any changes that might be required. But as of right now, we are still, we're still okay, and the averages of occupants in each building are below 5%.
Questions, comments? Lori.
I just want to add, since it came up earlier, just something that came out today, and our administration's probably seen this as well. Cheryl Nielsen is the contact for schools at the NHD HHS. She said that the CDC did a media release, but did not immediately provide the states with any documentation on these new recommendations. So most states have not changed their guidelines. She confirmed that the state guidelines for isolation and quarantine have not changed in New Hampshire at this time. Once the DHHs receives the documentation from the CDC, it will be reviewed, and then they will decide if any changes will be made. So I think it might be worthwhile communicating to our parents that just because it's, the CDC went to five days, our policies of school district has not changed.
I will be glad to do that tomorrow morning, because I just had a question late this afternoon from a parent about the five to 10 days. And I, my answer was, we are still adhering to the 10-day quarantine period. So, thank you for mentioning that. I'll communicate that first thing in the morning.
Jenna.
Actually, my comment goes along with the person who mentioned something in public comment. And it became, it just sort of triggered my, I put two and two together when Caitlin was talking about finals coming up. How, is there a way that we can utilize the technology we used last year to minimize the impact educationally for kids, especially in the middle and high school, high school in particular? I'm thinking of, for example, let's say, one of my kids at the high school gets COVID. They're out for 10 days between now, and then they go back to a midterm. Obviously, I know that there's going to be a makeup period, and I'm sure everybody would work with them. But I feel like the impact of 10 days out, which I agree, we should be absolutely following that guideline in order to keep our, you know, our community as safe as possible. But I do wonder if we should start considering if there is a way that we can utilize the technology, at the very least, even just let the kids watch in on class, even if the, even if the teacher isn't necessarily catering to anything. I know we're adding stress upon stress to these kids who are out for 10 days. They want to be successful, but they can't if they're missing class. There's a couple of classes, I mean, I just think of it in terms of my own children. There's a couple of classes I think my kids would probably be fine just going onto Canvas or whatever. But you're in an honors class, and it's challenging you, and you're doing your best to keep up, and then you have to miss 10 days because of COVID, and you maybe aren't even that sick. You could be homeworking and being on Zoom or whatever. I'm concerned that we're going, you know, we talked about the stress of the pandemic and SEL, and just making sure these kids are, we're not pushing these kids over the edge. In order to facilitate that quarantine without heaping stress on, I wonder if there's a way we can explore the idea of using the technology we have to allow students to be able to access education during a 10-day period. I know that's asking a lot. I know, I know how the teachers feel about it. I know how the teachers have said they feel about it. I know how stressful it is for the teachers, and there's no winners in this situation. But with our numbers going up, we don't want a gigantic chunk of our population not able to access education.
We will be discussing that at our leadership team meeting on Wednesday. We've discussed it periodically to make sure the teachers are in contact with students. I think like every other organization, some probably do a better job of staying in contact than others. But that's where we need to bring a little bit more consistency to this process. I know the commissioner, here's where we're walking a tight rope with the commissioner, who has indicated to us there is to be no remote learning. I know the teachers find it very difficult to do concurrent learning, but we will be glad to discuss that and see if we can do a better job.
I really appreciate you just kind of staying on top of it and revisiting it. I appreciate it.
All right, Shannon, and then Lori.
I brought this up probably three, four meetings ago, that we have the technology and we should be using it. I'm not saying concurrent learning in the way that it's been used prior years, but the fact that you could stream and, even better, stream while recording, and not have it be a two-way dialogue, but at least give students access to the lesson plan as it was presented to their classmates. I know they cannot pipe in from home necessarily, because that would be distracting with the two dynamic environments. But I brought this up probably almost two months ago, that we should be looking at this technology that we own and say, why aren't we using it to at least give kids a resource? And again, we know that some of them are probably sleeping a lot, make sure that those things are recorded, so when they're up to watching it, they can. So, you know, we are not going to get out of this for the short term, probably not the long term. But the thing is, we should never not do this, because we're always going to have a cold season, the flu season. Strep throat is all the rage with the students, last I checked, that there's always a good reason to minimize infection, to have kids still learn, have excused absences, because that's what they would have, but not lose the lesson plans. This is the great opportunity we can take from this, the great learning we can take from this, is we can always have something tangible, a tangible asset for these kids instead of worksheets in a textbook and say, do your best. So, and now that we have it, let's do the best we have with it.
Lori?
So, you know, I think that everyone's doing their... I think everyone's doing their really the best job that they can. And we've learned a lot of lessons during the COVID thing. And I think that administrators and teachers, they're in the classroom, they know what they need to do. And I think we should let our school administrators and our teachers decide on what's the best plan. And we've learned a lot of lessons, and having a teacher try to teach to the computer and the classroom doesn't work. Ask any teacher in America, it doesn't work. So let's go back and let them to see what's going to be best for their students, and let them do the job that we hire them to do.
May I just say that this Wednesday, and it's a good time to introduce Jason Pelletier. Jason is our new Director of Instructional Technology and Learning Systems. Jason will be at our leadership team meeting and will be instrumental in the discussion that we're going to have in terms of how do we do a better job in meeting student needs, and also without creating an extraordinary amount of increased stress to our staff. So, Jason, I don't mean to put you under pressure at that meeting, but...
Yeah, I mean, certainly a challenging situation, and I agree with a lot of what I've heard from everyone. And there's no perfect solution either. I mean, we're still battling a pandemic, but certainly, you know, what, whatever tools we can use and, you know, our teachers can use in their classrooms to best support that learning and loss of learning, or to prevent the loss of learning, I of course support the loss of learning, you know, is certainly welcomed. And I think even further along the same subject is something that's come up before too, which is, you know, I really hope that we can put some remediation as well into this school year without making students wait till the summer. I think, you know, as we go through the end of the semester and we can see remediation areas, that, you know, we're able to proactively try to get in front of that without summer school being the option. Because I think, you know, I think that comes with connotations. It comes with self-esteem, potential issues. It also comes with children not getting a break that they need in the summer, which is very well-needed. So I would say, you know, as we continue the dialogue of what we do to help in the immediate situation of when students are out of the classroom for 10 days, you know, with COVID quarantining, that we're also looking at how we stay in front of it. And certainly, the summer school, I think, is a viable option. There's, we've always done that, and there's always been a need for that. Particularly, any way that we can do remediation before we get to the end of the year. You know, whether we do Saturday clinics, you know, to help with some, you know, challenging areas for students, that they can come and get some help and support. Anything that we can do, I feel, is really, really going to be important this year.
Kim?
I just want to add too that we recently obtained a list of teachers who have offered to do tutoring for students after school. So we have that possibility and that in the works to try to reach out to families a little bit more and to support students.
That's wonderful news. Thank you. Okay. Anything else before we move on? Caitlin?
I just want to, from a student's perspective, I would like to echo Board Member Hardy and Board Member Barnes's point of view, that it would probably be absolutely devastating to me, missing 10 days right before a midterm. Because that's, I don't know, the average high schooler, most high schoolers have six classes, and that's a lot of content that you're missing in class. And I know there was a lot of pressure on teachers last year with the concurrent learning, but it would be very helpful to a lot of students if there was some sort of model where we could get that class content.
Thank you for those observations, Caitlin.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there's a compromise here that would be very worthwhile.
Okay. Lori?
I just wanted to throw that out, because I think there is a compromise in between what Board Member Barnes and Rothaus said, and it goes to that teacher. I have days where it's very conducive to recording and putting that up for a student to watch when they feel like they can watch it. I have other days that we're doing stations and activities and stuff that you just can't record. And it's content that they're just going to have to get another way, whether I provide a weekly update or something like that. And so I think encouraging and asking our teachers to record their lessons that are conducive to that, but not worrying about that online student if they zoom in, is a great way to go. And trusting them to know what part of their content needs to be recorded and what doesn't. And then they can catch up with their student on when they need to zoom in, when they don't, what needs to be caught up.
And I think it goes without saying that we know, we just know how teachers are, and we have teachers probably already doing just that. You know, that's what they've been doing before COVID and now as well. So I want to make sure that we're not cutting any of our teachers short on the credit they deserve and what they do to keep kids up to date and up to speed.
Okay, moving on to new business, the board's response to the 2022, 2022 to 2023 capital improvement plan.
Yes, per your request, I've provided with you, and you have that in your packet, and it is online too. It's under the supporting documentation for the board meeting, the much-anticipated and always highly-regarded CIP and bonded debt schedule that kind of brings everything together. So you can, you can take a look at that in juxtaposed to the capital improvement plan, the map of the roofing sections at Thornton's Ferry, and then the letter we received from our roofing consultant. And at this point, I'd like to bring the expert on roofs to the forefront, Mr. Toussot, our facilities director, to go over the process, go over what he learned when he walked the roofs, especially, you know, Thornton's Ferry, and to say, you know, firsthand what he saw and kind of flesh out the opinion that was offered by the outside firm that we had do the evaluation. So I don't know if that's the direction you want to go in right now, but Tom is here, he is the expert. So, Tom, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, Matt, and thank you for having me. I'd like to talk about Thornton's Ferry roofs. Yearly, we evaluate our roofs as we go through, normally I'm on a roof twice a year. It seemed to parents, me, probably at the beginning of summer this year...
Sorry, Tom, sorry to interrupt. If you're comfortable, feel free to take your mask down while you're speaking. You're welcome to do that.
Okay. So, at the beginning of the year, I felt a need of maybe bringing Thornton's Ferry up higher on the list, because if you look into our SIP, Master Call Elementary School was ahead of them. At that time, we were in the middle of summer. By the time we progressed, we talked to our roofing consultant, which, as Matt is so kind to say, that I'm the expert, I may be the expert here, but I don't do roofs 24/7, and that's kind of the individual that we want to make a final decision. And for the last two years, that's the directions we've headed. Prior to that, I used to do most of it, but now it seemed that it would be best to let somebody else come in to give us another opinion. So far, we've been very fortunate. He's been, or they have been in agreement totally with me. So I feel better. But we do find that Thornton's Ferry roof at this time is really showing need of repair. Repair is in replacement, I shouldn't really say repair, I should say, there's certain sections that need to be replaced. So it skipped ahead of Master Call Elementary School. One of the things he noticed when, there was actually a group of them, they have three different individuals. It was early morning, we had a little mist on. Some parts of the roof and some parts of the roof had a little ice on to it, and some parts were melted. His point to me was where some of the areas have melted off prior to the sun hitting it meant that we had a potential moisture issue there. And that's where we started from there. At that point, we investigated a little further, and he asked me about, what do you have for leaks? Where are the leaks? What, how are you addressing them? And I told him, we bring in contractors on a regular basis as needed to address the leaks. His conclusion, and actually their conclusion total, was that we probably have some issues that we need to rectify sooner than later. So he felt, as he wrote in that letter that you received, that he thought that Thornton's Ferry is in need of replacement coming next year. So that's kind of where we're sitting with Thornton's Ferry. With that, I'm going to say, Master Call Elementary School is still in need of replacement, that they are not as high on the list. So we had a whole, we had an evaluation process that we went through for many years. And unfortunately, sometimes happens, things get moved off and bumped off because of certain important things in front of everyone. But at this time, that Thornton's Ferry roof definitely does need to be replaced. So that's what we're going with. He has taken some core cuts of it, and he's, we're currently working on a plan to put it. Hopefully, we'll put it out and try to get a price on it as soon as we can. Prices have went up unbelievable. I'm hoping that the figure that we tossed around will not be the figure that we end up with, but that's where we're at for right now.
Yeah. Yeah, and when Tom mentioned that the coating of frost on the roof that was dissipating, not because of sunlight, it was dissipating because there was heat loss in that area. And when you have a roof that has an R-value, I don't know what the R-value is, you probably know that.
Well, they're a little less than they should be. Right now, the code, and along with this, we will be bringing up the code R30, which is a new code that we're going to be...
Yeah, and so currently, right now, they're probably...
R22.
R22, okay. So, see, I told you he was the expert, right? So, anyway, so when you have wet insulation, the insulation loses its insulation properties. So that means heat's going through the corrugated deck. It's going through the wet insulation that isn't insulating anymore, and it's melting that area. So that's how they knew to look into that area. So tomorrow morning, look at your roof, and if you see any areas that are a little bit, you know, clearer than others, if there's been kind of a little bit of a frost, you can tell you may or may not have an issue there. So, you know, we thank Tom for his due diligence in going through that.
No, I just wanted to ask, because you mentioned that the quote came back higher. So are you looking at a number higher than $1,600,000?
No, it was considerably less last year. And I wasn't, yeah.
That's great news.
Well, we'll see. I mean, you know, the cost per square foot's gone up around 10 bucks a square. And on a 40,000-square-foot roof, that's around 400 grand. So, you know, it kind of is what it is. But hopefully, you know, much like when we did the middle school years ago, I think that was $1,200, something thousand dollars. When we went out, that was only for the first section, not the cafeteria section. And when we put it out to bid, we discovered for the amount we had budgeted, we could do the entire roof, so we wouldn't have to split it up. And then the board made the wise decision to go forward and do the entire roof while they were up there. You save on general conditions, everything like that. So that was a good, a good call, and we did get a good price. So if we, you know, come up with the specification, we put it out to bid, maybe we could get a price before deliberative session.
We try to, and then we always say it's pending pass.
It's pending, pending passage of the warrant article, so we don't lock ourselves in. But if we, if we could get a price before, you know, March 8th, whenever deliberative session's going to be, I don't know if that's a little too soon.
At this point, we're planning on putting it out somewhere around the end of January, hopefully, maybe the beginning of February. So we could be close, yeah.
We could be close. So if there's a significant difference in the price, we could at that point in the deliberative session make a... we could at that point in the deliberative session make a, if this were to be a warrant article, I'm not telling you what to do. But don't laugh, Jenna, I'm not doing, I'm not doing it, okay? So we could do an adjustment if it was if it was less, you know? We don't expect it to, well, who knows, you know? Couple of weeks goes by, you have no idea, you know? Roofing material could be in Los Angeles Harbor right now, I have no clue. So, you know, it's it's something that we would, you know, work with to try and get you the best deal you could. But we're kind of of a mind that this is something that we're to the point where we haven't done a roofing project in a number of years. And it's it's kind of time, so.
Yep. And actually, to that point, I know it's going to steal the thunder of your hearing, so really sorry about that part. But when you're talking about warrant articles, there were some notes that came back and I just want to be clear about in my time on the board, what the intention of a warrant article is. And that is something that is good for the district, the district needs it, but doesn't necessarily need it right away. It can wait, like the windows at the high school. Will will the, you know, will rain come inside? No, it won't. But the windows are not in good shape, they're not great insulators, but, you know, there's definite value of doing the windows, but we could still run the school without them. I'm not hearing that about Thornton's. That's where it does not feel like a warrant article to me at all. That is raining inside is is not good unless you're doing a weather chapter in science and it's an experiment. So I have a real concern with the fact that you're talking about not only that there's leaking into the roof, into the insulation, it's affecting the heat, it's affecting, obviously, there's a, there's millions of dollars of equipment underneath that, kids underneath that, and I'm also worried about things like moisture inside insulation and black mold. That always comes from that conversation. So this to me isn't a want, it's a must, must have, and it has to be in the budget. It cannot be a warrant article because that means voters, what do you think about doing a roof? Can can we do it this year? I know it might be, you know, a couple of dollars on your tax bill. This is, if we don't do the roof, there will be damages. That's not up for the voters, that's why they elect us. So and I just, I know it's getting again into your hearing for later, so our question is going to be quick later. But that's the concern I have about the CIP not matching our budget book.
Well, and I think, you know, to that point, if it is a warrant, I know we'll talk more about this probably a lot over the next few meetings, is if it fails, no means no.
Yes.
And so when you thought, no means no means that you you can't try to redo the budget to be able to pay for something that's absolutely necessary. You put yourself in a big bind and I was talking to Matt about this earlier and and then there could be a whole bunch of other problems where we'd have, something I haven't seen since I've been following board meetings is then you have to go to the state and do all sorts of damage control, try to get special meetings and you really can back yourself into a pretty big corner if if it were to fail.
Yeah, just to to kind of further explain for the public, if this law that passed probably around maybe six, seven years ago, you know, if you have a warrant article for a particular purpose and the purpose would be to replace Thornton's Ferry Roof and it fails, you used to be able to be able to dig into your operating budget, cobble together some funds and and do it anyway if it was an emergency. You can't do that now. So you would have to let it fail. So and then on the, to add to the complexity of it all, when you add it into your operating budget, we have an operating budget that's around 200,000 dollars over the default budget. And so when you add it into your operating budget, we would now have a default budget that's 1.8 million dollars over default. I mean, over the, we have an operating budget that's over default by 1.8. Last time we had that scenario, I think that the delta was 50,000 and the budget failed. You know, so we have to do some good education and communication to the public why it's important if you wanted to go that route. So there were two things going on. Is it too important to put in a warrant article and risk it failing and then not being able to do it? I'm kind of feeling that way, but that's up to you guys.
Lori.
So I was just going to say, so we do have a couple advantages and one, I think, is clear communication to the town. I think the town has been very supportive of the schools. And the other advantage is, I think, is that we have a business administrator and a director of maintenance who are lifelong professionals in this school district who have led the school district for many, many years in a very positive way. And I think the town of Merrimack trusts your judgment and I think that you've been very fair to Merrimack and I think that really helps us.
Okay, any other comments? All right. And then back to our agenda item, which is the capital improvement plan, any any other comments on that? Shannon.
I have a couple. So the CIP does not have amounts or place settings with or placing with amounts for the student service SAU office and the MHS field, which of course we're looking to do turf. That said, I think that it's hard to really look at the big number if you don't have a number and how to schedule it. So what Matt provided, which is also on our website, is what I call the dip and spike chart. And that is take all your capital improvements, which are of course not the course of regular business, and our bonded debt, which is of course what we are paying off, bonded debt and lease purchase debt, which is very helpful, Matt, to add that in as well. And what you look at is how do you levelize that work so that you don't create a dip or a spike in in the budget and have your rate go up and down and not be a reliable number on your tax bill? Which of course, that's a hardship on our families. Where they get the break, they're going to get the burn later. So it's not really a break, it's just, you know, if you if you look at it long term. So that said, I think we should place the SAU office, SAU Student Services Office with a 10-year bond with an estimate of 4 million dollars. Because I think it was 3.2 as the last, am I getting that right?
Yeah, it was around 3.0. We looked at several different flavors of it and it always came up to around 3.2, 3.3.
And that was about four or five years ago. So I really think that we should just maybe go to four. And then I think what we want to do is put it on, oh, I should, now I have to take my glasses off.
24, 25.
23, 24, because the first payment on a bond, unlike the lease purchase, is only the interest. So by that point, 24, 25 is going to kick in and you're not going to have a middle school bond anymore. So you're all, you're all paid off over there, Adam Carragher, so we're all good.
You own the building, Adam.
Yes, you'll you'll get the deed, you can you can frame it. So with that, I think that's the right place to put it at 4 million dollars. And then again, that will add your, I I am terrible at this math, so I am putting you on the spot, but like a probably be 100,000 dollars for a for an interest payment? And I'm being like really bad at math.
For first year's interest payment.
On say a 4 million bond?
On 4 million, trying to think back. Yeah, it's probably 100, it's probably 100 grand.
Okay.
The Honeywell, the the Honeywell lease purchase, the the lease purchase interest rate was like 1.55.
Right.
And the first year's interest payment's like 98,000.
Right.
And so that was, that was 4 million dollars.
Right. And that's, I think, what we're putting for the placeholder.
Right.
So if you do that, and I, again, I'm going to make a motion to do that once we vet it, but I just, you know, want to kind of tell you the methods of my madness first. I think we should do that. Then we would just have to basically put in that amount that would increase that that year by 100,000 dollars, because again, the payments will go for 10 years. And then the turf field, I would estimate, because I think we're looking at what, 1 and 1/2 million, Matt?
Tom, do we, artificial surface, last time we we looked at that, it was around 1.6?
1.6.
1.6.
Yep. So I'm going to estimate to two only because of time and and age. So I would put the place a turf field in 25, 26 for 2 million. And honestly, I would go if at most, I don't, I'm not, I would say that's someone else's decision to make, but I think you want to put 2 million there and then decide if you want to outright purchase. I don't think you could probably do the the lease thing with with turf.
I don't think.
That's not really a leasable item. And then so you'd have to go that or a bond, but then that would be a 2 million dollar bond. And again, what it's going to do is it's going to create a flow chart. Again, I think a turf field lasts, what, 10 to 15 years?
Yes.
So do a flow chart, so you're not spiking any tax rate at any given year. You're flowing out the money to get those big projects done. And I think you'll be in really good shape when you're done with that because again, we have, the middle school's paid off 23, 24. The ventilation lease is all that's going to be left for bonded debt and that's going to be done, is it 29, 2030, 2031? And that's 469 a year. So I think that puts you out where you can flow it out and not be in a position where you're going to spike anyone's tax bill over the next 10 years.
Yeah.
And I miss, if I'm missing it, just let me know.
No, you're not. And the replacement cost, when Bedford did their replacement cost for their field, right? Wasn't it like 600K?
680.
680.
And we have to do the, we have to do all the digging and the and the trenching and the.
Yeah, the initial cost is is like the 2 million, but the replacement cost is, you know, for Bedford, it was like 6.8 because you have all your infrastructure, your drainage, your fill, your material, everything.
Right. So in my personal opinion, because I will be, you know, watching Monday Night Football when this happens again.
Well, 15 years from now, I don't.
Well, this time, this time next year, I'll be watching Monday Night Football. So since this is my last CIP exercise with with all of you. But with that said, I think that you'll be set up very well. Because again, you're right, it's going to be say 6, 700,000, 800,000, whatever it's going to be in 10 years. But if you bond that out for the life of the first one, now you're just putting new top on, new top on, it's not going to be the same. But that initial investment is definitely going to be higher and you may want to consider bonding that and then look at an operating budget for the rest of it. That's just my, I'm giving you all the advice I can before I retire here, kids. But with that, I don't know if, I would like to make a motion to add 4 million dollars to put a placeholder for the SAU sped office for 23, 24 with notes that it would be a 10-year bond and the first year would only be interest with an estimate of 100,000. And then add the turf field to 25, 26 for 2 million, again, with a bond with an estimated first year payment of 50,000.
Yeah.
Do I have a second? Me by Lori Peters. Would you like to speak to it?
Do you really want me to say anything more?
No.
Well, I'll speak to it since I will be here next year not watching Monday Night Football. We all like to get that tax rebate in the fall, but you're right, it it ends up biting us when we need to do these kinds of things. Seeing it in the public, being able to see the next, you know, 20 years, what's coming up, where it's going to be, leveling that tax base out, I think is a is a good way to go. And as far as the TBD, yes, I don't like TBDs on financial documents. So I think putting in good raw estimates is is a good way to go for this. CIP.
Any other comments? And I would just say I I agree, I will be supporting the motion. I think the more visibility that we put for the public as, you know, to what's coming down the pipe, the better. And also, there's nothing set in stone with this, this is just a way to show a methodology of planning. We know future boards and, you know, will make decisions that, you know, may take something off of it, may add something else on it. But at least when we put something out there, we can show that we've planned to try to prevent tax spikes for the taxpayers. And also that we have a plan to not only do that, but to take care of the facilities that we have. Because we all know that if we let something go without planning, then we end up with emergencies and nobody likes emergencies. So.
My only comment was going to be, I know that in the past, being on the school, planning and building committee, we used to put everything in, but what happened is something wouldn't, we would move it and then it would go up a million dollars and people would get upset. So I I understand because that's exactly, it used to always be there and then we'd say, all right, we're going to move that for two years and then it, the price would be exorbitant and people would, but I understand why we want to do it also. So I'm supporting it, but I understand what the thinking of what happened in the past.
Okay, anyone else want to speak to the motion? Shannon.
Actually, dude, just one other thing and I think that I didn't really explain because this is our financial responsibility conversation. But know that when the turf went up as a petitioned warrant article a couple of years ago, which this board supported the petition, we actually did so with the expectation, the hope that there would be fundraising to offset the cost so it doesn't all fall on the taxpayer. I don't think the wish of the board would be any different, that we would look to collaborate with our community, that showed interest. Because again, we know that the football team has gotten the field, but the soccer team has been kicked out of town, the lacrosse team, the field hockey teams, we want all our kids playing in Merrimack, on Merrimack campus. Whatever we can do to do this, this will accomplish those goals. We need to have home games be home. And I think it's that when we talk about Friday Night Lights and the community asset, we have to keep it in our community. And I just think that, you know, we're going to need help from the community to do what they can to soften a little bit of the blow if we can and maybe not have to bond so much because we may have a good down payment with fundraising.
Jenna.
So I will say that I think we all know how I feel about a turf field. I think that is a wonderful public record out there for anybody to go and find. However, that, but that gives me the insight into knowing that literally over the last two weeks, someone reached out to me, having found me through the Facebook page from way back, whatever year that was, that, you know, we've kind of tried to do the the warrant for the turf field, whenever that was. Maybe it was pre-pandemic, so it was 400 years ago. But anyway, there's a group that's mobilizing now to actually do exactly what you just said and I'm getting ready to hand over the reins of that page to them and let them run with it. And it sounds like they've got, they've got some key people in place and they're mobilizing. So that timing may be ideal considering where we have it in the plan. So I will, I will just say that I I know that literally that's been happening behind the scenes, so.
Good news.
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion on the table, please say aye.
Aye.
Faced. None, that's 5, 0, 0. Anything else on the capital improvement plan? Oh, Tom.
Just a question, and I'm not trying to reorganize it, but I'm looking at some questions that I received from Cindy and Lori in talking about Brentwood. And when we talk about Brentwood, I I kind of think the whole picture is some of that is our improvement plan there. So maybe this ties a little bit into this conversation. And the question read, remind us the total cost of maintaining the building. Also, how many times does the police department use for training last year? And how many times is the police department going to use it in the following year? The information I do have is at this point last year, we spent roughly 6,054.33. This was a warrant article in 2021 to raise the building for approximately 125,000. We did roughly price it out now and probably the cost of raising the building at this point would probably be somewhere close to 200,000 dollars. So, and the last part, I want to make sure I mention to you, last year, we did use, the police did use the building approximately six times and the fire department did use it approximately five times. So that's information that kind of comes into the total picture of everything that might be happening out there, even though it is kind of connected to my budget.
So that brings up a question. Is that something we want to put on the capital improvement plan, is the raising of that building? Shannon?
Didn't we consider that part of the SAU sped project at the time? So in that 4 million, I would assume that the campus, the raising of that was going to be in that? So I don't know if it'd be double dipping, but I I will defer to you, but that's what I thought we did when we last.
Yeah, the 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 plan according to Keach, might as well call it that, Steve Keach, is is one of the components of the the SAU master plan would be the the raising of that building in order to, who knows? In order to have a clear, clear sight that we can do something with. So that would be it. Because the goal in talking when we were at the planning and building committee, and Laura, you were there too, you know, Steve was talking about getting a lot, getting most of the parking away from the front of the building where it is right now, utilizing the sides and utilizing back a little bit to give some more green space in front of the high school as opposed to guardrail and parking lot. So they're working on a design, but anything they do, it only helps us by the removal of that building. It gives us more space, be it parking or tennis courts for Kim or anything else you can think of, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure it was accounted for because it is significant enough. And there's one other area that I wanted to make sure that that is accounted for as well, which is the middle school soccer fields. I know we've had a number of discussions. I'm not sure if there's any other, if some of the work that we've done has solved some of the problems there or if there's anything we need to put in the capital improvement for kind of that swampy, which can be swampy area at times.
Yes, and there is still some wet areas when we have rain. One thing we did find out over improvements that we did make, it was effective. Now there's roughly two places where it drains, it drains from a swale and then there's a pipe that runs underneath the swale. Anything that comes out of the pipe that re- runs underneath the swale would have naturally went under the swale and filtered right into the ball field. So when I go up there and I, I take a look at it when it rains, uh, we're getting water directly coming off the field. Meaning coming into the swale. When I look maybe a day or two later, the pipe that's underneath the swale is coming out approxim- just the same as the pipe. It just, it's emptying as rapid as the swell is. So we're capturing a lot of water. Did it do a really good job? Yes, it prevents all the water shedding down from the hill, off the glacier till, down into the field. That helped us a lot. The unfortunate part is that what we do know now is the soil itself is not percolating well. It doesn't drain. If, if it rains up there, we're not getting any water off the hill, but we are, but we're not getting the water penetrate through the ground.
Is it clay?
It is clay.
Yeah.
It's clay. Unlike the high school, which has got a beautiful sand base.
Yeah.
And that drains love.
Everything in the Master Cola area, you know, high school, the, the, the fields, you know, in front of Master Cola, where Tom's building is, I remember when we dug the basement for that, it's sand. It's all sand in this particular area. The topography in the middle school, it's clay. It's like Reed's Ferry. Reed's Ferry is clay. And so it, it acts like, in fact, Steve Keach actually, you know, made this comment that, you know, you can have all the drain and fill and whatnot in there before you hit the clay, but the clay acts kind of like a big bathtub.
Yeah.
It doesn't drain from there. So there's going to be some additional drainage that we have to look into to, to kind of make that. Which Steve is, is working on, right, Tom?
Right. We did solve some of the initial problems.
Well, we did help out a measure, immeasurably. However, there's a step two.
There's still another step to go.
So does that step need to be in this capital improvement plan?
It could be. It could be if we want it, but we've been waiting for a price.
We don't have a good number yet for that.
What's the best way to handle that then? Do we come back once you get the price? Do we put a placeholder? I could do a motion for a placeholder. Is-
We could put, we could have a conversation with Steve, put a little pressure on him to get us the price. Steve, you watching?
Yeah.
Uh, and then we could come back.
Okay.
See what we could do.
We don't need to approve this yet, right? We could wait till the next meeting and I, I think unless anyone is opposed to that idea, again, I think for visibility, I'd like to-
And could you just give an idea of what year you were looking to put it in? Just, cause now we do need a placeholder, we need a place, like, we don't need a number, we need a place to put it. So what year were you looking at?
Well, I would think depending on the cost of it really, you know, if it's, I mean, I'd like to see it maybe the twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five. Sooner rather than later, because it's something that we've been trying to work to resolve now for a few years as well.
I could be way off, but it's probably going to be somewhere around three hundred. It's kind of what we're thinking, we thought about before. I'm not sure if that number is going to be considerably lower because of the work we've already done, or it might be even higher. I don't know. But that, that would be my ballpark.
Yeah, I would say the twenty-three, twenty-four and see what that looks like and, um, take it from there. And I, should, do I need a motion for that? Should I, or do we can just do it when we revisit?
Can I, can I say something before you make a motion? So I'd like to, I know there's not a lot of time, but I always, I think the um, planning, building committee really likes to be a part of it too. So if they could weigh in somehow, I think it's important that they also have, you know, they are elected and it's some, this is very important work to them.
We could certainly, I can call up Rich Hendricks and-
Pending our, you know, recommendation is, but we'd like to-
No, that's fine.
Send it back.
See what their thoughts are.
Okay.
That's fine. I'm not, personally, I'm not real fussy, just if it's something that has to get done.
Yeah, we're, we're-
Somehow have it accounted for.
We're under no time constraint to get this done in preparation to present to the Town of Merrimack Planning Board. I haven't heard anything from them expecting us to appear before them.
Okay.
It's been that the past couple of years. So we can certainly take the time to bring this in back of, back of the, in, back to the planning and building committee, get their input and, and talk about, you know, uh, phase two.
Well, I agree with Lori. I mean, it's better that we're aligned.
Yeah.
You know, with their roles, our roles, and then, um, to see if we can get alignment and then bring that back.
Yep.
Certainly no reason to rush it through. I'd rather have a well-thought-out plan than, um, just get our stamp of approval on it. So we'll go ahead and defer this then to our next regular school board meeting, not budget related. So it would be the second one in January.
That'd be perfect.
Okay.
Yeah.
If there's time. Now, if there's not, because I don't know when the planning and building committee meets.
I'd have to talk to Miss, Mr. Hendricks.
So if we can't get it in front of them before then, then we would then defer to the first meeting in February.
Yeah.
Does that work? Okay. All right. So I think-
Cinder?
Yep.
When we do put it on the agenda, will we have tonight's votes amended on the CIP? So we just get a newer one that has tonight's adjustments on it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Perfect. Thanks.
Okay. I think we can kind of just segue into the second part of, um, your presentation, which is the formal presentation on the maintenance budget, even though we've discussed a lot of it already.
Well, thank you. Uh, I'd like to start off by highlighting three areas that are going to see increase in this upcoming budget. One would be the access to playground equipment at Thornton's Ferry. Uh, two would be the emerg- uh, the, uh, retrofit lease for unit ventilators that are coming up and increase in utility costs. Those, those are three areas that, uh, definitely we're going to see some increase this year, major parts of the budget. And from that, I can go into questions or how would you like me to?
Yeah, if you could just walk through the questions you received and, and then we could open it up for discussion.
Okay, uh, question by question?
Yeah.
Good. Okay. First question was from Shannon. The overall message makes it seem like we are level funding while we are likely facing increased costs. There is a definite increase in funding, funding increased costs for goods such as utilities. The response would be in the three items that I mentioned earlier, one, we're expecting approximately, well, a hundred and eighty, excuse me, a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars increase for utilities. A three hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollar increase for ventilation costs for new unit ventilators and roughly thirty thousand dollars for Thornton's Ferry's playground improvements for access to handicap equipment.
Yeah, the utilities primarily because, you know, due to COVID, it was a recommendation that we run our HVAC systems twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. So that, that's exactly what we're doing. So when you, we used to do night setbacks, right?
Correct.
Tom, and shut everything down. But because, you know, to refresh the air and recirculate the air, we've been doing that for I don't know how long now. So
Since COVID started.
Then since COVID started. So that, that, that cost, uh, an additional funding in, uh, in electric. Our electric rates are around seven cents a kilowatt, a little bit less. We, we did that deal a few years ago, which was pretty good and that's good until the end of two thousand twenty-four. But the distribution charge from ever source, that's out of our control. They do whatever the PUC lets them get away with. And I don't mean in a bad way, but you know, they, they can name their own price on that. Cause we can't, we can pick a supplier and we can bid out a supplier and we've been doing that for well over couple of decades now. And, but we can't choose the the distribution network. It's ever source, so. Next question?
Next question. Okay, it's in a repair account, it's one hundred dash forty-six hundred dash sixty-two eight four five one dash oh eight. And the question's from Shannon. Can you please confirm what this repair account covers and why we are able to continue not to fund it? And that account really held most of our SIP stuff that we used to put in there. Meaning like we used to have roofs in there at one point, we would have boilers in there, we have transformers at some point. Number of items that would come up, there would be significant costs would go in there. If you look at it right now, last year we were about twenty-five, I think it was twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollars. And it held three items, uh, excuse me, two items. One item was relief valves for most of our boilers needed new relief valves, except for the Master Cola Elementary School. And the other item that was in there was chorus rises for the high school. So those two items were there. This year, I don't believe we have anything in there and that's why it's down to nothing.
Yeah, the switchgear at the high school was around four hundred grand.
Four hundred grand.
We had that in there. So that was a big capital item that was in the, um, in that. We call it the sixty-two account. You know, everybody knows what the sixty-two account is.
Paving sometimes?
Paving sometimes, whatever. But you know, we, we just haven't put those capital items in the operating budget.
Okay.
So just to clarify, if there was say a one point six million dollar roof, it would go in that one?
It would go in that account.
Just checking where to put it.
That's the account for it.
Okay. Supply, supplies. Shannon, how are you level funding when custodian supplies are likely to increase costs due to inflation increases in goods such as bags, uh, paper goods and soap? Our real, what I'm really banking on is we don't really have a good handle on where we're going to be since the last two years we've been in COVID. So we're using less toilet paper, we're using more toilet paper, we're using paper towels, we're using spare. So there's really not a clear defined path there. But one thing we are, I am planning on is the LED project that we've started last year, that's going to save us a lot in fluorescent light bulbs and ballast, which doesn't sound a lot on the initial thing, but that's probably between five and six thousand dollars a year. So that's a huge savings, which I'm, hopefully will offset a little bit of that cost. And that's why I'm trying to keep it as level as I can. Okay. Next question is on page thirteen, it's from Jenna. There's a budget line for Master Cola Upper Elementary School and Master Cola Middle School for electric. Why is so much more for than, than the elementary schools? At Master Cola Elementary School, we roughly have about fifty-five thousand square feet. At Thornton's and Reed's, both schools have roughly sixty-five thousand square feet. Both Master Cola Upper Elementary and the middle school are round, right around a hundred and twenty thousand square feet. So it's about double size. And that's why there's additional cost there. Also, we see additional costs at the middle school because that's the only school that we have right now that is all air-conditioned. We are parts above other schools, but that's why we see a significant increase in that issue. Moving on to next question, gym floors. Um, Cinder and Lori, please clarify the rotation of finishing gym floors. How often do they need to be done and maintained for quality of flooring? What we do is all our wooden gym floors that we have, all our gym floors are wooden. And every year they are screened and they're refinished. That is done every single year. Sometimes you might hear me speaking, I think a couple of years ago, I was looking for maybe the middle school. And what happens is every ten to fifteen years, some people like less. Unfortunately, right now they've ran a little on the up side of that of fifteen years, they need a deep sand. And when you do a screening process, you take off three or four layers of finish and you recoat over that. When you do this deep sand, you take off all the finish and a small layer of the actual wood to try to even it out more. A wood floor has approximately four to five sandings in it. Uh, we have some floors, as you see in the capital improvement plan, like at the high school is done its life. And after four or five times, the only thing, once nails start showing a little bit, it's time to replace it. And that's why that would be, I believe it's in our capital improvement plan up ahead, a few years at the high school. But that, that's a charge that will be there every year. Also, sometimes we need to add lines and that would be done out of that account also.
I have a question on the floor.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I know at JMU's, we just did the floors with that alternate material. Um, Matt, you know, I forgot what the material was.
Yeah, it's, uh, it was a rolled, um, you know, vinyl, sort of vinyl, um, was from France, right?
Yeah, it was.
Yeah.
Heavy duty.
That's all I remember. I'm sorry.
Super fancy.
It's, 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 it's really, it wasn't super expensive. It was, you know, moderately priced, but it was a a hard surface. So you could take the, the, the all-purpose room, uh, which is also used as a cafeteria, put the cafeteria tables on it with the wheels and not dig into the hardwood. So it's a very exceedingly durable surface.
Right.
So yeah, that was awesome.
And I was just thinking, because I know that the Merrimack High School gym is used for much more than just basketball games. It's used for band concerts and chorus concerts and so many chairs on the floor, all those things. Would that be a consideration of a surface for the high school and, you know, what would, you know, would that be something that would be, as I said, less expensive as well? Just because then, and again, we used, at one point we used it for voting, but that was a terrible idea.
That was, that was a bad idea.
That, that is kind of like a tricky situation. I would say it's traditionally wood floors, a basketball floor, and it would have to be examined at the time. Uh, one thing we do is when we have events, we do cover the floor on occasions when we have bad weather and stuff. So there are coverings for that. So that kind of takes care of that problem that we have. Unlike at a cafeteria where the tables are rolled every day.
Yeah, I would definitely want to have an in-depth conversation with Mike Susi and, uh, you know, his NHIAA counterparts.
NHIAA as well. Just what are other schools doing? Has it been tried in other schools? What was the result, those kind of things? Cause again, it's less expensive, but the, the wear and tear is what I'm thinking of, because it's used for a lot more
Yeah.
than, than just, you know, the basics.
Right.
Okay. Then we're going to move on to parking lot striping, Cinder and Lori. We're addressing parking lots in our SIP plan, so it may sense to hold on striping. So the, the real big question about, does it make sense to hold on striping? Striping is done every couple of years. Sometimes it's every third year and it's just not striping for the high school. Uh, it's striping for all the schools. So it's important to keep that in because sometimes what happens is stop lines, uh, control lines around the schools. So it's just not located to one location. It's something that we do on a regular basis. Okay. Cindy and Lori, Lori? And this has to do with the site work at Thornton's Ferry. We want, we want to make sure there's enough money to support the project. If the parent group falls short, how can we ensure the project is still going forward? Is this a project in, is this project something that we begin considering for other schools? And yes, we, we're probably going to start considering this for other schools at some point, but right now we're kind of focused on, there's a parent group at Thornton's Ferry. The parent group at Thornton's Ferry is going to do the fundraising and they got, they're going to handle the cost of the toy or the, of the playground structure. And we're going to handle the infrastructure. We're going to do the ramp and stuff like that.
Yeah, and they're, they're going to pay for the professional installation. We'll get a cer- certificate because of playgrounds, you have to get a certificate and everything like that. So they're like nipping at our heels. So we better take care of the parents at Thornton's Ferry.
Yeah. Is there a possibility that we may want to consider adding a little bit more money in that to see if we have any offsets, any of the small, small problems they might have? But when we met with them, they were pretty confident that they could handle that part of it.
Yeah, correct.
Okay. I mean, I, I think that the, you know, the spirit of our question was, you know, we really love the idea, very grateful to that parent group um, for, you know, giving and putting their time into something so meaningful that A, if they fell short, you know, do we have a backup plan for it? Cause I think it's a very worthwhile project. And then, um, you know, what, what are the plans then similarly, like for the other elementary schools? If that becomes a good model, you know, do we want to look at that for, you know, the other two elementary schools?
I think we'll be always open to any of the groups at the schools that wanted to do stuff. I think we'll be always open to any of the groups at the schools that wanted to do stuff. We would definitely look at it and I would definitely meet with them and work with them.
Yeah. We kind of did the same thing with the preschool playground over at Thornton's Ferry before. So did, did you do the cameras, Tom?
Did I do the cameras? Did I miss the cameras? I did miss the cameras. Thanks, Matt.
Okay.
All right. Please tell, please tell us the areas where cameras are needed to ensure full coverage of our buildings, particularly on the inside areas. Last year we were very fortunate that the state was able to, uh, we received two hundred thousand dollars from them. And we were able to put up approximately a hundred and thirty-nine cameras adding to our. So at this point, I think we have a total of two twenty-one for cameras. At that time, we added cameras wherever we needed them. I think adding cameras to everything is always going to be an ongoing change and stuff. A couple of areas that have been mentioned and I've talked to, uh, a couple of schools, uh, Mastecola Upper Elementary School was one. It said maybe in the stairwells, we need some, maybe in, uh, some of the playground areas that would help us out a little bit. So we're, at this point, we're still looking and determining that. I, I'm taking a year look through and make sure we're really going to get it and maybe that's something we revisit next year.
So if I, I'm trying to remember the numbers you just said, but it sounds like we close to doubled the cameras last year?
One, one thirty-nine and total now we have two twenty-one.
Okay, not quite, but still significant percentage increase.
That was through the public infrastructure fund?
Yeah.
In fact, you guys signed off on that.
Like to use it or lose it? Use it quickly?
Yeah, use it, yeah, we had to use it quickly. Um, that, that fund is, is closed off right now, but maybe in the future. Building aid is non-existent, you know, you're, I know you're going to ask that question at some point. Um, I asked about the roof, uh, you know, did the, the whole deal with the state and they says, no, you, you can't get anything. Used to be able to get thirty percent, but you can't get anything now. So we'll see.
I feel good that we've increased by that much. You know, it's one of those things that sometimes you don't, you know, we had a luxury, I guess, being able to do so much at once, but it's one of those things that I think is always important to continue. So we don't end up with huge burdens of having to put a bunch of cameras in or, or problems. But, you know, that we continue to add where it's needed is certainly important to me. I don't want to speak for Lori, but I know that, um, she and I reviewed and came up with our questions together and, I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with that answer. Are you? Lori, are you comfortable? Yeah.
Yes.
Shannon?
I just think we need to be very careful during testimony like this, that we don't talk about where there are voids in cameras because that's a safety issue, because now we're opening up in public testimony where there's opportunities. So we have to be very careful about our testimony on this.
Thank you. All right, next question.
Were we done on questions, I think? Or did we, did I miss something?
You've got the, it's, this, this isn't in Tom's budget, but it is the scoreboard question?
Oh, the scoreboard question, yes.
You said to me you replaced the lights and that's about it?
We do. We replace the lights and we come in and actually I know Mike Susie was working with that at the high school to try to get him replaced. So I think that question, even though it sounds like it would make sense, it would be mine. It's something that he's really working individually on with the high school. So Steve and him would be the, probably the people that ask for that.
In the, in the past, the way those scoreboards got put there is we signed a ten-year contract with Pepsi. You notice they, they probably, they still have the Pepsi logos on them, right?
I am not sure.
I'm not sure either. But yeah, that was, that was O'Neil. O'Neil signed a ten-year deal with Pepsi. And then we built the middle school in two thousand and three, two thousand and four. It opened up in two thousand and four. And so then I added on another six years to that agreement to get the scoreboards at the, uh, the middle school. So.
You know, I'm going to add on, the MYA has done a lot of work on replacing boards and doing stuff at the elementary schools. They have.
Yep.
Are they all functioning as they should be?
The best of my knowledge.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
I believe that's it unless there's any other questions.
Any other questions or comments regarding the maintenance budget? All right. You are excused. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks.
Happy New Year.
And Cindy, may I just thank Tom and, and his staff also because, you know, we've all seen a lot of school systems and the conditions of buildings. But I have to say, I think Merrimack has some of the cleanest buildings of any school system you're going to find and most well-kept. So congratulations on a great job, you and Matt.
And that's longstanding. I mean, that's been ever since I've been involved in our schools and even well, well before. So yeah, definitely good work on the maintenance of our, it's one of the reasons we're able to keep things for so long is your team takes such good care of what we have. So we appreciate that.
Cindy, could I say one thing along with that? I just want to say, being a new board, board member this year, I called Tom earlier, uh, in the summer, asking some questions. And I just want to say he is, does a great job of being accessible. So not just to us, but any member of the public. He is willing to answer questions, um, explain thoroughly what can and cannot be done and I really appreciate that. Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom. All right, next up is the formal presentation on the middle school budget. Welcome, Adam Carragher.
So thank you very much for having me here tonight. Uh, I appreciate the time and happy new year to everybody. Uh, so our, our Merrimack Middle School budget proposal for twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, shows our continued commitment to our students at Merrimack Middle School and to the school climate. There is a request, uh, proposal for six thousand dollars related to after-school assistance programs and enrichment programs for our middle school students. As we all know, these programs are vital and very important to helping engage our students and helping them to make and maintain connections with their peers, with staff, and provide an opportunity for them to continue to grow and learn and do new and exciting things. So there's also a component of that is in the co-curricular slash awards supplies, where you would also see an increase to help provide for the different supplies available for those programs. As well, in the middle school budget, you'll see that we have our usual, if you will, supply accounts that are there that really support the curriculum and the instruction at the middle school. I had one question from Board Member Barnes. She asked if I would please outline the additional co-curricular programs you are looking to offer and also please provide what was in place in typical years for students. So we, we would like to have funded, uh, through, through this account. In particular, a yearbook, uh, science Olympiad, a quiz bowl, as well as afternoon intervention opportunities for students. So in years past, uh, the, these, these programmings that we had are somewhat inconsistent as it is dependent upon, uh, a service learning project, which is done through the Merrimack Teachers Association contract. So that's how teachers would receive stipends in order to, in order to hold these club activities. So. Does that answer your question?
And Adam, I think the reason is, you know, where it was different for the elementars, they got quite the grilling about this whole thing because, you know, you are in a fortunate position to have grades that allow you after bu, after school bus access. Uh, you don't necessarily have to worry about childcare, um, programs to make sure that, you know, you have people to, you know, get kids off the bus, those kind of things. So for you, it's about, you know, how can you take that and leverage that money to really reach further and deeper with the students as well? And, and offer that variety as they're really developing their, their, themselves and their interests in, in a way with independence. Uh, so definitely very, same question, but almost very differently, um, approached. So, so with that, these are things that were being done, um, but were at risk. So I think that's, that's a big concern, knowing that, you know, when it comes to if the stipends or the, if there was not a sort of a project, I think some of it also probably came through maybe, you know, professional development, those kind of things. So without those projects, um, for say research, any of that, you could have things fall by the by and you wouldn't have them. So I think securing the funds, having, you know, the, the learning projects being for professional development, I think it's really kind of getting back to the core of what we want to do with some of those, those programs and, and, and kind of spreading it. So there's guarantees for these kids and really foundations inconsistency. Cause the other thing I heard was you've found teachers learning, looking for projects. So you didn't necessarily have the same yearbook advisor, science Olympiad coach, quiz bowl coach, all those things have been very different. And then on top of that, so it's afternoon interventions, interventions. And I think that's another question is, is it going to be like math lab tutorials? Um, is it going to be, you know, is it going to be kids from all different teams, different grade levels going to one area? Or is it going to be like, how's it going to break out for these interventions?
So we haven't really, uh, put exactly what we would want them to be structured wise, but the idea would be that it would be accessible to all and that there would be opportunities to have different staff members with different levels of expertise in the, in, in the content areas in order to be able to provide appropriate support.
Gotcha. And I, and the reason I'm asking that is, is that going to be enough? Because again, if it's interventions, doing the catch-ups, doing all of those things, knowing that seventh and eighth grade are going to have very different curriculum uh, associated with them, especially I'm looking at science, social studies. Maybe with English, you have some, some things you could do like on fundamentals, math on fundamentals, but not algebra. So you have some, I think, diversification in your building. So will that be enough to, to get you through it and still be able to do that and not have to go into the old way of doing things?
I, I think given, given the, the intervention times that we do have during the day, that it will be enough to, you know, get us started and it would definitely be something I wouldn't hesitate to revisit knowing, you know, the support of the board and, and administration as well.
Great. Thank you.
Jenna?
Hi, I'm so glad you're here. Um, I don't have a question. I just want to take this opportunity to say thank you to you for all that you do. I consistently hear really positive feedback about Merrimack Middle School. Obviously I have, you know, two very recent Merrimack Middle School graduates and then one not, not that far, you know, ahead. And so, but my own kids and, and I talked to will obviously have a huge community of friends and parents in those same age ranges. And everyone consistently says what a great experience their kids have at Merrimack Middle School. Obviously it's not universal, you know, you're not, you're going to have people that have the different experiences. But I have heard overwhelmingly positive experiences and considering that middle school is so, some of the hardest years of kids' lives, especially my two kids went through during the pandemic and everything else, I just want to commend you. I think you do a really, really good job, um, with that community of kids. You make it feel like a community. That's the comment that I get from kids, from students. You know, I, they love the feel of the middle school. They go there and you make them feel older and more responsible and important at a time when they need to feel that. And I just, I just want to say, I think you and Shawna, who isn't here, but deserves, you know, that credit as well, have done a phenomenal job and your staff, everybody. I just really can't thank you enough.
Thank you.
And I'll just circle back on that real quick is thank you also, because I know you're in transition, the Shawna just leaving. So I just, um, especially during hard times like COVID where you're already stretched thin. So thank you for holding down the fort there too, until you get a little more help and support.
Absolutely.
Lori?
The only thing I was going to say is, um, I think that everybody came in, uh, with a pretty level funded budget because they knew that we had, you know, a teacher's contract to pass. So when I look at your budget, it's really level funded. It's, it's, you know, bare bones because, uh, we, we know that we have some important, you know, let's put the money towards our teachers and, and let's make sure we can maintain and recruit really good teachers. So I appreciate the work you did with your budget to keep it level funded.
Any other questions, comments regarding the budget?
I have just a comment and it's just an, it's kind of out here. It's really budget related, but I could bring it up in comments, but then you won't hear it. So I'm just going to bring it up now. And it has to do with, what I would love to see is you work with Stephen Clare at the high school to really promote our languages. You know, we have Mandarin and Arabic and really come together. I feel like that's a really underutilized opportunity for students. Um, so I don't know, and I feel like the time is right at the middle school, um, to do information sessions. I can tell you for myself, my son took Arabic in the high school. And that was really, um, interesting when I did some college visits with them. The, the folks that we spoke with in admissions were very impressed that our school offered that. And I feel like it's a differentiator, um, as kids, you know, go out into the world and certainly a really dynamic opportunity, um, with some quality instruction. And I just, it, I think, you know, when kids are picking their classes in the middle school or their languages, it can be easy to fall on default languages that, you know, everybody are more traditional, you know, in a school setting. But that language program is something I'm so proud of that we offer. And I just think that, you know, being able to have information sessions so kids can take advantage of it and really, again, like I said, help differentiate themselves would be really spectacular. Jenna?
Um, I totally agree. And I can speak into this because, um, my son, uh, takes Mandarin at the high school. And, um, you know, Mr. K, I didn't want him to take Spanish or French at the middle school. So, um, Mr. Carragher worked with me to find a way for, uh, you know, we found a program for him to do. The school didn't set that up at all, but Mr. Carragher was able to work it so that he could do it during his study period at school. And it, so I'm, I mean, he went out of his, you know, he didn't, he went out of his way to facilitate it, but didn't, you know, didn't cause any disruption for anything. It was a very simple, straightforward thing that he accommodated something that we wanted to do and we wanted it to fall in the, in the school hours. Any opportunity for us to do more of that, I mean, it made, it was a huge difference maker, huge difference maker. And being able to build that foundation for my son to start Mandarin in, in high school with an advantage. And so that's just an example of how he goes out of his way to make sure that kids' needs are being met. And it was a way that he did exactly what you just said. But I agree with you, bringing those teachers down, maybe giving a presentation, talking about the opportunity, that's huge. I'd love to see that happen.
And I think that those language should be thriving. And I, I feel like we have opportunity to help encourage students to take advantage of some really unique offerings that we have at our high school. I mean, there's other ones too, but certainly, but, um, the language is one that comes to mind for me.
Thank you for that.
All right. Well, thank you again. Any other questions before we conclude this formal hearing? All right. Well, thank you for coming, you know, first day back to school. Reentry is tough. And, um, I hope you have a good, uh, happy new year and a good rest of the school year too.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Adam.
Uh, next up is the formal presentation on technology, library and media. And welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having me, everybody.
To your first school board meeting and welcome to the district. We're glad to have you.
Yeah, seeing that Jason, uh, was, was not here during the construction of the budget, I'm going to have him present the whole thing as if he did it himself. No, but there, basic, basically what you're looking at is kind of a, a level funded budget that kind of carries over the work that was done by Nancy Rose, who did excellent work, uh, to just kind of keeping, going forward. I've had a, I've, I have had a brief conversation with Jason, uh, to try and get his, what, you even like four, four, this year for like fourth day, right?
Uh, third day.
Third day. Okay, third day. It seems like you've been here much longer. So it's been, this is his third day, you know, we had a conversation and he's been, he's been digging into, you know, our network, our infrastructure, everything like that. It's, it's, it's amazing the amount of, of information that he has acquired in a very short time. So I'm trying to gather all of that from him and I really look forward to working with him. I think he's going to be a fantastic addition to the Merrimack School District. Nancy Rose was a fantastic, uh, asset for us. I, Jason is going to, to be that as well. You know, working with Kim, working with Bill, being a part of the leadership team. We are exceedingly happy. I'm so happy that you're here, you know? So there were a couple of questions. I'll just answer them. I think Jason may have a copy of it or, or I'm not sure. But, you know, Shannon asked, please outline the computers that are leased when they are, were procured, length of lease, if there's a buyout at the end. Uh, we have around seven hundred and thirty that are leased. Twenty-two, twenty-three is the last year for these. It's a three-year, three-year lease. Also included in there was a firewall appliance. We'd like to maintain this line for future replacement purposes past twenty-two, twenty-three. These computers were acquired in two thousand and twenty and there was a dollar buyout in the end of the lease. So after the lease, we own them. And Jason and I were talking about, you know, lifecycle of computers. I believe in the, the backup here, there's, you know, six years or less. It depends on what they're being used for, what grade level, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, So, you know, Brendan Collins, who is known to Jason, so they already have a rapport going on, who's our network administrator. It just did a, a big data dump of all the inventory we have. And we, we have considerably more computers than we did a year or two ago, primarily because of the, the ESER funding and the move towards remote learning, which required, which required most kids to have their own device. So, you know, please provide how much of the infrastructure was covered by federal funding such as ESER and ECF? How much of our infrastructure was procured using federal E-rate, longstanding federal funding mechanism for connectivity, which is unrelated to the COVID programs? Essentially, you know, due to the ramp up that we had to have during COVID to make, you know, it was March of 2020 when everything just kind of fell apart. And then we had to scramble and acquire computers and Chromebooks and whatever. We threw ESER funds, we used to purchase around 1,700 Chromebooks, 400 iPads and definitely a new server and some other wireless access points and everything like that that we scattered throughout the school to increase the wider wireless connectivity. And that was used basically all of, of ESER funds. Of the ESER funds we have remaining, we've got maybe around $650,000, $700,000 left in the ESER account. And that money is good until the end of September of 2024. So we're kind of slowing down the purchasing right now. And with Jason here, looking at what we need to, to do to beef up our infrastructure and our speed to the desktop, and he's already come up with ideas on that. In fact, very concrete ideas of, oh my gosh, I can't believe you guys haven't done this. And it's kind of make, like, makes so much sense. It's like, yes, I think maybe we'll go there. So as far as E-rate goes, we have an E-rate consultant that we use. I did E-rate, Jason and I were talking about this before. He did E-rate in math. I did E-rate maybe here, maybe 18 years ago. And it's just such a confusing process about the Form 471, the BEAR form, everything like that. You don't hit the state, you lose the money. And so I did it one time and then Nancy came on board and we hired a consultant to take care of that. But Jason's familiar with the E-rate program. And that basically paid for our, he gave us like a 30% or 40, I think 40%, right? Forty percent?
I understand it's 40.
Forty, yeah. Percent discount on our internet service from first light. And so that's significant, you know, because that's probably all total, we're around $100,000. And we're saving probably, you know, $40,000 to $50,000 on that. And so that, that's a big thing. But we'll look at other avenues where we can go. I know internal connections weren't paid for. I know years ago, regular telephone telecom was paid for. Cell phones were paid for, but the rules have changed and those, you know, benefits have, have kind of gone away. So we'll work together on that. So as far as the library budget is, it is essentially level funded. We have ESER funds to move us forward as far as technology goes, any PPE that we may need, et cetera. And so we're going to have to, you know, balance what we think next year is going to look like. So, you know, obviously we want to involve the superintendent, the assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction and assessment. I said that pretty good, didn't I? Yeah. That's a long title. So, you know, we all, as a group effort and a leadership team to come together to see, you know, what we can do, what we, what we need, what will, what will carry us into the future in a, in a prudent, measured, planned manner, seeing that we have until September of '24 to, to spend out those funds. So I don't know, Jason, you have, you want to introduce yourself to the board? I know you've met with them because you did interview with them, right? So, but any other stuff you want to say, any, anything that comes to mind since you've been here? What you've noticed, what you've seen? Be my guest, please.
So the first few days have been great. Merrimack seems like an excellent community of people and everybody's been very welcoming. So I'm appreciative of that. So thank you all. And going around, it seems like you guys have a lot of things in place with technology, a lot of good things. And a lot of, some of the things I just saw were just some of the internal connections from the classrooms back to the closets, right? So take, trying to take a look at that because that's where all of the data flows from there to the closets. And usually, it looks like a lot of the closets back up to the internet or to the other schools are in pretty good shape and updated and whatnot. So in the first few days, that was kind of the only thing that I was like, all right, we can definitely get a plan together to do that. And that's very common in most schools anyways, right? But, but again, like a lot of the systems are, are in good, good shape, good place. And, you know, anything that we have to go and swap out or do a recycle plan is kind of just basic maintenance that, that you would do anyway. So only a few days on the job, but very happy to be here. Thank you.
Well, welcome. We're really glad to have you. Any questions?
I was going to say we're going to keep you busy. I think probably when we had our last technology plan, we were looking at introducing more computers to the classroom. And now everyone has one and bandwidth demands. And, you know, I know that we've heard the parents that said that their kids use their cell phones because it was more reliable because everyone was on the systems. But I know that we've done a lot with, with COVID and ESER funds and, and E-rate funds. But I know that the demand's never going to go down. It's only going to multiply exponentially. So, you know, we look forward to hearing your assessments. I mean, this is not your, your budget year, but next year I'll be again between, you know, downs on Monday night football, checking in this hearing and seeing how you're doing. But, but I think that that's, that's going to be something that we will be keeping you busy because the demands just are going up and up from K to 12 where it was, you know, I think, it, it's just going to keep us really going. But and of course, as technology improves, what it can do improves and then it needs the internet to, to really thrive. So I'm looking forward to what you have to bring. Thank you for coming mid-year. I know that doesn't always make it easy for, for everybody, but especially the new guy coming in. But we look forward to all that you're going to do for our kids. So thank you.
Laurie? And I was also going to say thank you for your presentation and welcome. I guess I can't wait to hear, you know, begin with the end in mind, what, what your vision is and how we're going to move forward as, you know, I think we're in pretty good shape. But, you know, what's the end game and what is that going to look like? So I really look forward to, you know, after a couple of months, having you come back and give us a update on your vision for our district.
Sure. Happy to do that.
Well, anything else?
No, I'm all set.
Well, thank you, Matt, and thank you. And I hope you have a good evening and happy new year as well.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is the location for the January 18th, 2022 meeting.
Yes, on January 17th, you know, that is Martin Luther King Day and is a holiday. And so our meetings traditionally have been the following evening. However, on the 18th, every room in this facility is, is being used and has already been scheduled for another meeting. So I'm going to recommend that we meet at the high school cafeteria on that night. It is capable of having live broadcasts via cable and really is the, the spot that is most conducive to holding a meeting, particularly if there's any, any audience. So that's my recommendation for the meeting on the 18th is to have it at the high school cafeteria.
Doesn't really sound like there's really many other choices.
No.
There we are. And I think as a reminder to the public, all of our facilities are, do require masks within the walls of the schools. So masks would be required for that meeting. All right. Moving on to the date of the deliberative session. Right now we've set the date of the deliberative session for March 8th with a snow date of March 10th, which, so the Tuesday is March 8th, Thursday, March 10th is the snow date. So mark your calendars for that and I'll continue to coordinate. We have to formally do that. Do we have to vote on that, Matt, or is it okay to just?
Yeah, it's okay to just.
Publicly stated?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So those are the dates. Other, other new business? Shannon?
A few months ago, we had the, my goodness, Historical Society, not the Heritage Society, Historical Society come to us. And we have given them access to one of our facilities, which is the old PTA kindergarten facility on Depot Street. And we do it with an annual rent of a dollar. Since the Historical Society is an arm of the town, does it make sense for us to entertain a warrant article that would give ownership of the facility to the town since it's their entity that has taken, taken residence of that facility? So it will come off of our books, go onto the town books and then can become the permanent home of this, the Historical Society. And with that, I think we need to have a couple of things happen and that being discussion with the town. And then from there, whether a warrant article should be put together for this year's ballot.
So we can add that to the next agenda. What I would ask is that we look at to the requirements, that was originally a gift or a donation to the town. And there may be some underlying, I'm recalling, maybe I'm wrong, but there might be some underlying requirements that it has to be used for educational facilities and transferring it to the town.
I think if it ceases to be used for school purposes, the sum of $10,000 has to be paid to Dartmouth College. John Listoka gave me a copy of the original will. So yeah, we'd have to look in, into that.
Okay. So maybe we can do.
We'll do a little exploratory and some, you know, legal stuff and see if it would go.
Maybe ask the Historical Society. They can probably help us out.
I think that's where you got the, that's John Listoka, someone who gave them the info, right?
Yeah. So he can, he can help us out.
All right.
Or we could give them the building. We could swap it for them tearing down Brentwood.
Taking it off our CIP does not sound like a bad idea. You could give them all that free training.
Yep.
But I am excited that there is such a good use for that building. It seems very appropriate.
Absolutely.
And really a benefit to the people of Merrimack. Otherwise, it was kind of on that back corner in Amherst almost, that real far back corner of Merrimack, it feels like. And so it's good to move it.
And I want it to be theirs. That's really kind of the, the thing is, you know, we, we did it for the right reasons. We're doing a, a dollar a year, but it's still ours. And the thing is, if we give it over to the town with the intent of being the permanent home of the Historical Society, that's one of the most educational centers in Merrimack. And I think we could probably come, come along with Dartmouth on that, that line. Not that I'm a lawyer.
We could probably make a case that it's still providing an educational function because we would be bringing kids from Reed's, from Thornton's, from, you know, field trips to look at where they're living, you know?
The thing is, it's educational for anyone that's a lifelong learner. It's just the town's source for education about where they live. And I think that that alone is, is, you know, again, it will get benefit of it, but the town does for educational purposes. And that's really what the Historical Society is, is to teach you where your town came from. So I, I would, I would have, I would be hard pressed for them to say that's not educational. But, but with that, I want them to feel that this isn't a loner. And I think that, that's the intent of what I was trying to do, so.
Now, we can add that to the next meeting if we have enough time to get that info. And then next up is the approval of the minutes. I just wanted to say that I need to pull the November 18th non-public minutes. There is a question on that. So what I'd like is a motion for the approval of all the non-public minutes that we have to, to approve, which is November 15th, 2021, two on November 15th, 2021, November 30th, 2021, and then the non-public meeting, minutes for December 20, 2021. Do I have a motion?
Yes. And, and Cindy, if I could just say one thing, on the November 15th, we didn't get hard copies that are placed in tonight. But I did call central office today and there was one edit made that's, we basically redacted a student name and just replaced it with initials. So the permanent record for the non-public minutes would be the initials because it's student privacy.
Privacy protection. Yeah. Do we want to hold that one?
But I'm sorry?
Do we want to hold that one?
As long as you understand that what we're voting on would be the, the same as I think, but just initials instead of student name.
Okay. So I'll entertain that motion for the minutes I just discussed with just an update to protect the student privacy on the November 15th.
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM, non-public. So you made the motion?
I made that motion.
I have a second. Made by Jenna. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, that's five zero zero. Then I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the December 20th public meeting, public meeting minutes, made by Shannon, seconded by Lori Peters. Any comments, edits, updates? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, none. That's five zero zero. Now we move on to the consent agenda, item number eight. Kim.
Thank you very much. I believe in your packet you have one letter and I do have an additional letter that, if you don't mind, I'll read in. And so the first one is Athena Servakis. She was the tech ed teacher at Merrimack Middle School and she's put in a resignation as she will be transferring to a new role as the Title I math tutor at Merrimack Middle School. And that would be again on January 30th. The other one was an immediate resignation and this is from Eva Quill from the Merrimack Middle School. And she requested that, I don't have a date for, on this. Okay, but it's, it was written to the chief education officer Everett Olson and writing to this letter to announce my resignation from my post at Merrimack Middle School. I'm requesting that this resignation take place immediately. And I will not be following, I will not be returning following the holiday break. So those two.
It's effective immediately. Do I have a motion to accept the consent? Made by Shannon, seconded by Jenna. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, that's five zero zero. Moving on to other, any committee reports? Shannon?
Technically not a committee report, but as I serve on the board of the New Hampshire School Board Association, I wanted to make this board aware that there are two scholarships available to students. One is if you have a, a child or grandchild who is graduating this year and you serve as a board member, there is a scholarship available. My kids were never eligible because I'm on the board, but you are all eligible, your kids are eligible and grandkids. So, but Lori and I got a little time for that, both Lories. But those applications are opening up. And then this year, we now have a student rep scholarship. And so that is new. We've wired this for a very long time. It was approved at this year's delegate assembly. I know you're a junior, but if you look at how it's written, it's, you'll probably have to apply next year. You, you can stay for next year. I don't think anyone would feel terrible about that. We'd love it. But if, you know, if you served at any time as a student rep on your school board, your senior year, you will be eligible to apply for that scholarship. So that is new. And the other thing for my fellow board members is they put out their training schedule for this year and it is robust. And I think it will give you a lot of what you need to get a lot of work done.
That's great. Can we ask Sandy to distribute that to the training schedule?
Absolutely. What I would say is let me know if you didn't get that email because it had all of that in there because you should all be getting emails regularly from the New Hampshire School Board Association as part of your membership.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other committee reports? Correspondence. Laurie?
I received a communication from a concerned parent today about if we can investigate a way to have the bus company communicate with the school who can communicate with parents when a bus breaks down or some other mechanical issue arises. The student was left at the bus stop for about 25 minutes. And I think, given that it winters here and it's cold, I don't know if we could use our text message system or something like that, if, if we could investigate a, an efficient, quick way for the bus company to communicate with the district so that parents know if the child's bus is coming or not coming, especially during the winter months.
Yep, absolutely.
Jenna?
I had a communication from a parent concerned or questioning about whether we were changing our isolation slash quarantine policy from, you know, five to coordinate with the CDC. I expressed to this parent exactly what you had said earlier and that I would communicate that tonight, which has been covered.
And I had a concern that was communicated to me from a community member regarding particularly masking right now, given that the numbers are high in New Hampshire and just the concern for, you know, keeping kids in school and safety for staff and. and safety for staff and for students.
Sorry, I have one more. I just remembered. I also had someone communicate to me that, somebody's gonna have to look into this because I, this person communicated it to me shortly before the meeting and I didn't have time to look at it for myself. But on the COVID dashboard, apparently every day, the number of occupants of the high school every day since December twelfth has increased by one. So, maybe you guys are just like on a super hiring boom and you've got like one a day? But this person said, I think there might be a mistake. I think that person might be dropping down and somehow it's just adding a person every day to the population, which could be skewing your numbers. I have absolutely no idea whether that's accurate or not. I'm just telling you that it was brought to my attention and you can look into it and it's probably a typo or a, a quick, a quick fix. Or you're on a hiring tear, I don't know.
No, it should be a constant. I mean, unless we do have an occasional increase in our enrollment, but it wouldn't be one additional per day, certainly.
That's why they were pretty sure there's some sort of, like, if you drop it down, it somehow automatically adds one or something. Something funky's happening, so just thought I'd bring that to your attention.
Thank you.
Any other correspondence? Okay. Comments, any comments? I just have one and it's specifically around the COVID nineteen infections. And essentially, you know, we know that we're coming back, you know, from break and there's a lot of the highest numbers in the state since the beginning of the pandemic. So, you know, I know that you said that you would continue to keep the board updated once you get your arms wrapped around the current data set. And just, you know, want you to know if, you know, if there is an emergency situation and we need to call an emergency board meeting, that we understand we may need to do that. So, I just wanted to put that out there. And I think we want to, you know, keep a close eye on those numbers so that we can be as proactive as we can. It's just my personal opinion. Okay. Public comments on agenda items. We'll do the same thing. If there's anyone out here that wants to speak, please come up to the mic.
There are no emails.
And no emails. So, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, made by Lori, seconded by Cory. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, I need Lori to show up your hand. Are you in favor? Okay, five zero zero. I didn't think you'd be opposed, but, you know, you're welcome to stay. But thank you, everyone. Have a good night and happy new year.